Counselor Hughes.
Here.
Counselor McElroy. Absent. Counselor Strobel.
Here.
Counselor Littkey.
Here.
Counselor Prokop.
Here.
Counselor Tenbush.
Here.
Mayor Drinkwine.
Here, thank you very much for that. We had the first citizen and community group comment. I think most of you here to speak on the airport, so I'm going to hold off on a few of these. Is there anybody that wishes to speak now during this time? No, let's see, hands, okay.
And I think mayor, if I could interrupt, since we're not have, it's not a public hearing for the code, for the airport code, we could go ahead and you could hear them now, I think was their intention.
Um, I think.
I think they wanted to hear.
They wanted to hear the airport.
All of them, all of them want to hear it and then.
Yeah, and then they want to speak on.
Okay, after here, okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are at the consent agenda, you've all had a chance to read over the consent agenda, I know there were a few late items that were added. But I think all of you had a chance to look at that, can I get a motion?
Oh, real quick, Mayor.
Yeah.
I just wanted to ask one question before you, uh, before we pass on the consent agenda to uh, city manager. Um, after we spoke about the, uh, the water lines and the drainage lines being larger, did you get a chance to speak with the city works about that yet?
I did, I did, so the water line going to the splash pad is, we're anticipating that to be one and a half inch uh, water line or water meter, um, we're not sure what's in the park right now, so we'll have to take a look at that, but.
And drainage?
And drainage, we're still working on how to drain that. Um, but we're, we will find a way whether it is either to, we might have to bore under, um, the park and then dig up the, um, parking lot a little to get to the sewer line, or we'll have, if we drain to the storm line, we'll have to dechlorinate the water first. Uh, but we have those two options and we're still figuring out which is the best way to go.
And that one and a half, that's large enough for any expansion that may want to do, that's me.
Yep, good.
Okay.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
All right, I have a first, I have a second.
Second.
First and second, all those in paper say hi.
Hi.
All those opposed, motion passes, thank you. Department Committee reports, um, I will start off on this end, Paul.
Nothing.
Nothing.
Nothing. Nothing for me.
Great.
Um, downtown Estacada Commission met today, um, basically the, the bulk of the conversation was about how successful the Fourth of July parade was. Um, and how they're going to have to kind of tame it down a little bit next year, um, because they had an issue with, uh, staging. Um, so many companies with big rigs, uh, you know, just took up, it took up, they have a space issue basically, um, for staging, but, um, there was a very successful event, uh, it was pretty amazing, uh, and then, uh, uh, they spoke about, uh, the food carts, the event that the food carts had with the blow up house, the, all the vendors that were there and the mechanical bull or wolf, I couldn't really tell, but I, I did not, unfortunately did not go, go to that one, but, uh, um, I saw a lot of amazing pictures and just, uh, smiles on everybody's faces, so it sounded like it was a pretty great event. Um, and then they, they, um, Bennett Johnson has resigned from her position, so there is a new, new opening on the downtown Escated Commission, I'm sure applications will, the application for that will probably go up with the next couple of days.
Yeah.
But yeah, that's all I, all I have to report.
Thank you.
Uh, the D I C is still working on their survey that they're going to send out to the community to get, uh, a read on what people know about all the committees that we have for them to get involved.
Okay, great.
Good.
Parks and Rec met and, um, a bulk of the discussion was talking about, um, the trick or trot in the future, so they're already talking about what's gonna, you know, it's gonna happen in the fall, so they're brainstorming ideas, um, how best to stagger the runners, because they're anticipating a little bit more runners, talk about costumes, medals, what they might put in the swag bags, things like that, so, um, sounds like they're planning a pretty fun race.
Good, that sounds exciting.
And Mayor, I kind of forgot the, I did, the traffic and public safety meeting did happen, so, um, during that traffic and public safety meeting, a couple of things, um, one is National Night Out is coming out on August first, that's going to be right over here in the parking lot. There'll be, uh, the Clarkhamas County Sheriff has made a commitment to be there. I believe the fire department's made a commitment and then there'll be some other, uh, local uh, vendors and people there as well. And I think there's also some invites went off, I remember for nonprofits and stuff in the area. Um, and then there's some discussion about, uh, some of the stop signs and stuff in the area, uh, that were some concerns, one of them being, uh, the, my goodness, uh, I think, I remember which one it was here, uh, it was the one that was, help me out here, guys. What? Oh yes, Hillway, thank you.
But Hill.
Yes, they're going to be looking at that to possibly remove the stop sign, uh, on cemetery, near Hill, Hillway, to allow it to be a, a throughput, not a three-way stop.
Foothills and Cemetery.
Did I swear to say?
Hillway, foothills.
Foothills. Sorry, guys, it's been a very long week, apparently it's showing already, and it just started too. Um, and, uh, yeah, that's kind of the key things that come out of that meeting.
So, great, thank you. All right, um, I don't have anything, uh, right now, but city managers report?
Sure, I have a few things to share quickly, uh, first of all, congratulations to the D E C for a fantastic Fourth of July parade, um, and the fireworks too, um, later that evening, that was sponsored by Estacada Area Community Events and Fire District and other local sponsors, so thought that was, um, a great day of celebration. And we are going to have our next concert in the park that is sponsored by the Parks and Rec Commission, I think, did you mention that already? It's coming up on Wednesday. Um, CJ, I don't know this band, CJ Mickens Band, pop and all genres, so should be fun. Um, and then the LOC conference is coming up this fall, October 12th through 14th, so any counselors who are wanting to attend that, it will be in Eugene. And, uh, we'd like to get you signed up and I get reservations for you, so let us know as soon as possible, October 12th through 14th. And then we have also been having, um, quite a few calls uh, about the installation of the Comcast infrastructure. Um, and people are concerned and not, it's hard to tell because sometimes if you're working in the right of way, if you're in the street or under the sidewalk, that's very obvious, but um, sometimes they're working in the public utility easement, which is, can be like up to, in some places it's nine feet behind the sidewalk, so it's right in the yard in people's yards and they, um, the contractors are required to put that back as it was prior to their work, but they are allowed to work in that public utility easement. And there's also concern about, um, what if I don't want Comcast, I don't want them coming all the way up to my house and they won't be installing the cable up to the house unless it is requested, if you want to get Comcast service, then they will put it up to the house. Um, but just, if people have questions, have them give us a call, um, to make sure that, you know, the work is being done in the right place, but a lot of times it can look like it's encroaching into your yard and it, it could be, but it, it has to be in that, uh, public utility easement, so. Uh, people have questions, call City Hall and we'll talk with you about it. Um, and then I'm going to, uh, let Elena share, I'm going to share my microphone. Oh, do you? Oh, perfect, that's right, um, and she's going to give us a quick update on where we're at with Main Street. And this won't answer all questions, probably, we'll have to have a, we'll schedule a meeting probably for your next, uh, time at the end of July, but I'll turn it over to Elena.
So, uh, obviously we're not starting construction, we've had a delay, uh, P G E has been a little behind the ball on getting the engineering for undergrounding the power lines, um, so they have sent us finally their pro- preliminary design for undergrounding the power lines, they said they'll have the detailed design to us by the 27th. Um, but that puts us way behind schedule. That, the update from Corinne MacLeod, which is our engineer, says that, um, we will receive the final P G E design in September. And then they can put it out to bid in October, um, which will advertise and award the bid in December. And then give the notice to proceed in January and start work in March. And then finish the work in September. This undergrounding the power lines is considerably more involved than it was on Broadway, considerably more involved. And it is a very large portion of the budget, I did print it and put it on everybody's, um, things, you, you can take a look at it and we'll have a, have a further discussion later, but it, it's looking like it's going to cost a lot more than we originally thought it was going to cost to underground the power lines.
Yeah, so thank you, we will, we'll have the engineers come back, um, to, to discuss this with you, but we might have to make decisions, questions?
Do you have questions?
Um, so is this still within our, uh, a lot of capabilities to cover under the, um, urban ill budget?
Yeah, we budgeted 2.3.
Okay, so it's slightly over that.
Mm-hmm.
And then just checking in for the businesses on Main Street, I'm assuming some sort of communication will be going out.
Yeah, I, I got this this afternoon and, and we have it planned that we're going to be, um, sending out, we have, we did go through when we started doing the outreach and collected email addresses. And we have a good, a signup list of people who want to receive the information, so we'll send them to, and and if we have time this week, go out and knock on some doors too, to let them know, because I know people, especially on Main Street, who uh, have businesses and, and are worried about their customers, you know, when, when is construction going to start, I know that's a concern for them.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Okay, that is all.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're now at council business, the first thing on council business is the Airport Comprehensive Plan and Development Code Amendment. Um, I will hand that over to you. Uh, Taylor.
There you are. Yeah, hi, um, so this is going to be, um, kind of a uh, combo presentation with both me and Alan.
You are very loud.
Oh, that's usually.
Very, it's very unusual.
I know.
I don't know how to turn it.
No, she can turn on her mic.
Okay, yeah.
Not too low.
That, now you're too quiet.
How's that?
A little bit more, maybe.
More notch up.
Yeah, one more notch up. A little bit more.
How's that?
That's good.
That's good.
Okay, I apologize, I have no idea what my Zoom settings are doing, so. Um, fun stuff, okay. So, thank you, Alan, so, um, Alan has really done the bulk of this, uh, kind of research and preparation, but I am just going to start us off since, um, I was there for that whole airport zone debacle we went through about a year, little over a year ago now, um. So yes, this is just a, um, this is a check-in, a briefing about the ongoing, um, airport code and policy project that we've discussed with you all, uh, on a number of occasions now, most recently at the joint workshop earlier this year, we heard from both the council and the planning commission. Um, you know, some concerns and interest in, um, protecting the land that is currently the airport, making sure that, um, it's able to remain an airport into the future, kind of just recognizing the importance of that asset, both for, you know, economic reasons, oh my goodness, my cat, I'm sorry. Um, and as like a, a safety feature for the city and nearby areas. And then, um, so we'll get into that, but also just wanted to note, this is not all, as you know, this is not a decision-making agenda item, you're not going to vote on anything at the end of this. Um, this is the purpose of this is for us to get your feedback, to answer any questions that you have. Um, also, as Melanie mentioned, this is not a public hearing, but I'm aware that there are members of the public that have comments and testimony to, um, submit about this and some of them will speak tonight. Um, I just want to also note that my department, the Community Development Department, we're always accepting those public comments and that testimony. Whether or not it's, you know, a council meeting night. The adoption hearings for this, um, proposal won't happen until probably later this year, possibly early next year, with the adoption of the transportation system plan. So for anyone in the audience, um, that is, that wants to make sure that your comments get heard about this, if you don't get a chance to speak tonight for whatever reason, um, or if you don't say everything you want to, please contact us and, um, we will save your testimony and we'll make sure that it's included in the record. It's included for the council ahead of those, um, decision-making meetings. Um, and then, last thing before I get started, I want to direct your attention to there are some printed materials that are in your packet, we just wanted to make sure you had them printed for easy reference. Um, three items that are paper clipped in front of you, there's the memo, just kind of summarizing what these amendments are, kind of like the whole process of how they came about. And then there are the actual drafts of the text amendments that we're just going to be summarizing on screen. We printed those out because on the screen, we're just going to list things really briefly, and if any of you want to get into the nitty-gritty detail and see exactly how it's worded in the code, um, you have that in front of you and I'll reference those page numbers when we get there. Okay, with all of that, let's go ahead to the next slide. All right, hold on just a sec, I had to move out of that screen, let me get back. Where is that screen? Okay. Cool. Okay, so as I mentioned, um, the objectives tonight, there are really two primary objectives, we want to inform you all, um, about kind of where we're at with these updates, the last time we talked about this, um, we were, we had some vague direction, but we hadn't worked on drafting the actual code or policy language. Um, and so we were directed to do so, so now we have done that and, um, we want to let you know about it and answer any questions that you have, and then the other objective from this conversation is, we want to hear from you. Um, is there anything in here that you're not comfortable with, that doesn't quite meet the intent that you might have been looking for? Um, or any new concerns that have come up, et cetera, so we want to hear that feedback, um, earlier than later, so that we've got time to incorporate that before, well, well before adoption hearings, it's always best to get that early on, so that we can, um, package things up neatly for adoption. Okay, next slide.
Yes. Okay.
Okay, so just to orient us, um, the Valley View Airport is in the north eastern corner of Estacada's urban growth boundary, so this is a dark full comprehensive map, we're just seeing the northeastern corner, um, in blue is where our comprehensive plan map designates that land for airport uses. Um, that doesn't mean that all of those properties are the, the airport proper, um, but according to our comprehensive plan map, when we designate something, when we designate land in a certain way, what that is, is the city saying, this is how we want that land to be used. And then when that land comes in for annexation, we zone it according to its comp plan designation and the zoning controls what's allowed to happen on that land. Um, and we'll get into some of the issues with our zoning in just a moment. Um, so, but let's go to the next map, so this is Clarkhamas County's adopted map of the, of that same airport's official boundary, according to the county. Um, and so could we toggle back actually between these maps, you'll see, they are not exactly the same. And basically what seems to have happened over time is that, um, this, this one you can tell, the county's map you can tell is quite old, it's just like a scanned document from 1990 or something, um. What seems to have happened over time is that, um, at some, at some point, the airport boundary was drawn much larger than the airport property really is today, and, um, over time, the county has permitted um, land divisions to occur, so if you go back to the comp plan map, you can see that, um, you have this row, I don't know how easily you can see this, but there's, there's a, on the western side of the airport, there's kind of a row of these, I don't know, roughly, maybe just like, I don't know how big those properties are, like a couple acres maybe, um, residential properties that are just adjacent to the airport. Um, and what we're seeing on our map is a more updated look at the land that could be used for airport uses, so, um, you can kind of think of it as, as the area that can be used for airport uses is, is sort of shrinking, um, doesn't mean it's necessarily going to keep shrinking, but that's kind of where we come in, so let's move ahead just a little bit and talk more about, um, the issue that we're running up against. So, there is this state requirement that's established in O A R, Oregon Administrative Rule 660 dash 013, which basically says that if a city has planning authority for an airport, which what that means is, if you have an airport within your urban growth boundary, you have planning authority for that airport. Um, you might share planning authority for that air, airport with the county, which is true for us, because that airport is not yet annexed into city limits, but the fact that it's within our, um, U G B means we have an obligation to, um, recognize it in our comprehensive plan, we have an obligation to, as it says on the screen, adopt airport-related policies and land use regulation, which is, um, zoning code, development code. So that is an existing state requirement, it's been there since, um, 1970, whatever, when the state legislature first, um, started requiring cities and counties to do comprehensive planning. Um, so our situation is that somehow when we first adopted our comprehensive plan back in 19, roughly 1980, um, and adopted our comprehensive plan map, we did designate, we show this airport designation on our comprehensive plan map, but we did not, um, fulfill all of those state requirements by also, um, adopting airport-specific policies into our plan, our comprehensive plan text, you know, the chapters, um, and we also did not adopt an airport zone, so those are the land use regulations, the development code, um, that corresponds with that comprehensive plan designation. So, we sort of like made a nod to the requirement, but didn't really follow through with it.
And Taylor, could I, could I step in for just a moment to provide them with a little additional context?
Please do, yeah.
Yeah, so there are really three types of airports, there's a public airport, so it's, you know, like P D X. There's what's referred to as a private airport, public use, so it might be a privately owned airport, but with the is li- has limited, um, access to the public, and then there's a private, private, which is an airstrip on someone's property for their plane. Um, under O R S eight thirty-six, six ten, it sets out that there are land use, this land use code is required for public airports in private-owned, public-use air sport, airports that are specifically identified um, as providing important links to air traffic in the state, uh, providing essential safety or emergency services or of economic importance to the county where the airport's located. So a few years ago, this airport got a grant for some federal dollars, I think it was for paving. And part of the agreement was then this airport could be used for conflict creation and some other impacts, so at that point, um, it fit into one of those three criteria for the private public use airports, so that's why we then got a letter from the state saying, okay, um, where's your public safety overlay? And what we said was, well, the county has, the, it's in the county, even the center of U G B, and they have that, so prior to that grant, there is a best practice, we needed to identify this on the maps, but that's likely why the code wasn't adopted specific. And then, but when, when it fit into one of those three categories, at that point, it went on the state's list to make sure that we had all this come in whenever we received the land use application. So we got a land use application for residential development. State checked to see if we had a code, we don't. They were like, um, where's your code adopted, which obviously it's not that easy. Um, and at which point, I pointed out that they didn't have uh, model code, they, they were saying, they were asking us for criteria that they didn't have. Um, and then I called then Senator, um, Betsy Johnson, just because that's kind of my go-to person on aviation. So, um, we had confirmed that basically they didn't have the ability to regulate what they were trying to regulate, because they didn't have their own standards in place. But what we agreed to do with them was to basically have this public safety overlay and within the next couple of years, which is now, um, there is some model code language, um, and the state has adopted, or excuse me, the county adopted an overlay for the, I believe it was the Malala, Molino Airport, which we've taken a look at. Um, but again, we're going to need to get a little more, um, we're going to, we're going to do, need to do some regulations beyond what the county did previously. Um, and then it'll need to go to the state for their review and approval. But currently, because we didn't have the standards for this area, basically, we just proceeded as we would with any other R1 residential zone, which is for, for any any, um, runway, the houses have to be set back a certain place and a certain place to the sides, and all of that's happened. Um, but as far as going forward, because this is a new category, we're going to have, need to have some enhanced regulations, probably around things like height. Um, which is why we're bringing this to you, so it's, we don't have to get it done like next month, we have some time, but we're, we're also going to need to make sure that we're meeting the objectives of the users of the airport, because it does get a fair amount of use and there are people that live and also have planes at the airport. And also what we'll be looking at is, you know, is it anticipated that there would become a higher traffic? Um, or that there'd be more aircraft, because the, that's the sort of data that would then further enhance regulations, because again, all these statutes are around the idea that, um, air transport is critically important to the state, and in the late eighties, early nineties, uh, they did this whole mapping process of mapping the airports of their uses to designate them one of these designations, and then there are also these, I think they're called slides, they're called like Seattle slides, it allows you to look up kind of and measure the use historic as to now. Um, so that's what we've kind of been wrestling with, and then that's where the public comments become critically important, because the, the people that live immediately adjacent to the airport will, and use it themselves, will probably have the best knowledge as to the trends, and if they think those trends will continue.
Thanks, Peter, you're making my job real easy over here.
Well, I try and do.
Um, yeah, so, um, if you go to the next slide, Alan, I won't have to go into too much detail about this, but, um, some of you counselors will remember that land use application that Peter was referencing from last year, um, that really just brought this issue to light, it was an existing issue ever since, as Peter mentioned, we, um, I'm sure we're notified, I wasn't here, but I think it was back in 2001 when the previous, um, airport owner got that grant, um, which, you know, triggered those requirements to treat it as a public use airport. Um, so, anyway, last year, we brought this land use application through, um, public hearings, it was both an annexation request and a zone change, because previously, as it's kind of cut off, but shown on the slide, um, this property that was, that's just adjacent to the airport property, it's never intended to be used for airport uses, um, it was only sort of like accidentally remained zoned airport when it was, had been split off from the airport property way back when, um. This property came in and said we want to rezone to residential and that made total sense to all of us, but yes, we got testimony from um, comments from the Oregon Department of Aviation saying, you can't do that, because, um, basically, basically they were correct, we, we can't do that because we haven't met the state requirement, but as Peter mentioned, they couldn't, they, the person we were corresponding with couldn't point to, um, the actual rule or standard or, um, section of O A R that, um, really established that we could not approve that land use application. If they had dug deeper, they would have found that there, there is, it is in there, but, um, land use applications are time-sensitive, and at the time, they didn't get to it, and so we were able to get that through without you know, getting appealed to Luba and having to go through that, um, kind of expensive process. Um, go to the next slide, please, Alan. And so, basically, I won't go too much into this, because Peter did, um, summarize this pretty well, but, um, O D A, the Oregon Department of Aviation, was warning us that we could not, we, because we hadn't met O A R six sixty dash oh one three, we could not legally approve that land use application, um, but at the same time, because of the way that land use applications and. But at the same time, because of the way that land use applications and land use law works, we also were at great risk of appeal if we denied the application because we had not adopted the approval criteria that we would have, that we would have had to show was unmet in order to deny the application. So we were really in a bind because it, we didn't have a legally sound option to either approve or deny the application. That's not a good place to be. We want to avoid that in the future. And on top of wanting to avoid that, we also recognize that it seems like we, there's some, I don't know, consensus or at least majority recognition that we want to protect the airport. We want, you know, we should look at adopting these policies and regulations in order to do that anyway, whether, whether or not it's required or would keep us out of legal trouble. So that might be my last slide, or is there another one? Right, okay, so, and I'm gonna hand it over to Alan, but so just kind of wrapping all of that up, reminding you that the purpose for adopting these amendments that we're going to talk about is that and kind of the increasing, yeah, it's not super urgent, but the increasing urgency of it is that the development pressures are moving outward, right? We're seeing development, applications, and we're having people coming in saying, oh, like, I'm interested in annexing my property out here in this part of the city, right near the airport. And so as those development crush, pressures continue, we're gonna keep running up against this issue. We don't want to be in a vulnerable position. And we don't want to see this, you know, valuable local asset become threatened. So let's go ahead and figure out some policies and codes that everyone feels good about and, and get it adopted. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Alan, who's going to go into kind of the details of the content of those draft code amendments.
Thank you, Taylor, and thanks, Peter, for all that background information. So yeah, I'm going to talk about the draft amendments themselves, like the the code and the policy language. So it's composed, like the package is composed of three main components, and that's the airport base zone code, and that corresponds to the existing AP zone designation. And then the second piece is the airport safety and compatibility overlay zone code. And that's a lot like what the county has in place right now, but as Peter had mentioned, it's going to be, artists will be a lot more detailed. ODA, the Oregon Department of Aviation, looked over the county's code. And we were thinking at first that we were going to try to model ours, kind of after that, just kind of a cut and paste. And they found a lot of, a lot was lacking in their code. So they, at this point in the, in the spring, they had some model code to share with us and they did that. So that's the model code that ODA supplied us with is what our, these drafts are based on. And then the third part is a comprehensive plan amendments. And there we just basically added and revised some languages, language and policies in a few chapters. Chapter six, the environmental quality and land use hazards. Chapter ten, transportation, and then chapter twelve, urbanization. So wait, that is not where I wanted to go. Sorry, I had to switch my computer because my microphone wasn't working, so I'm actually on two computers right now. Kind of complicated. Okay, here we go. So I'm going to talk about the airport base zone code, and that section satisfies statewide planning goal twelve, which implements the city's comp plan policies relating to airports. It encourages and supports the continued operation of Valley View Airport. And as Taylor and Peter touched on before, and very importantly, it takes the city out of the state of legal jeopardy that it's currently in. It also allows for certain airport-related commercial, residential, and recreational uses. And if you want to look over those, it's exhibit one, page five, but we'll kind of go over those now. So the current base zone draft contains these uses and activities. I'll give you all a second to kind of look them over. Most of them are flight-related, but they do include a couple of different uses. There's some agricultural, agricultural and forestry uses, as well as residential uses on properties that already have dwellings, already contained dwellings. In conditionally, the draft at this point allows some aeronautical uses of a more like sporty nature. You see like parachutists, that kind of thing, but there's also some government and public utility uses there as well. And for the development standards section of the base zone code, we are proposing a two-pronged approach. Basically, for residential uses, we're proposing to apply the R1 standards, that's a low-density residential zone, and for all other uses, commercial, et cetera. We're proposing to allow the standards of the M1 or light industrial zone. Okay, and then moving on to the second piece, the overlay zone. So the airport safety and compatibility overlay zone, it's a mouthful. That code would require, and it quote, establish compatibility and safety standards to promote air navigational safety and to reduce potential safety hazards for persons living, working, or recreating near the airport. That's also an exhibit one, page seven, if you want to look at that. On, and here are some ways that the overlay zone would help to achieve those goals. Would require providing notice to ODA, the Department of Aviation, and airport sponsor-owner of any land use or permit applications under the overlay. Establishes additional height limitations on development, as Peter touched on before. Would outline procedural requirements around land use and permit applications. Put restrictions on uses in the runway protection zone, approach surface and airport direct and secondary impact areas, protects existing non-conforming uses, and limits expansion of non-conforming uses to minimize hazards, basically. Okay, so briefly going to go through the questions that we posed to council and the end of the memo that you were all provided with, your packet. And I'm going to go in the order of the comp plan chapters that we drafted additional policy language for. And then after I touch on each chapter, there's a summary slide with all the questions and we can make some time to discuss those. And basically, staff, we would just love to get some clarification and hear your comments or feedback on, on, on the following here. So in chapter six, the environmental quality, land use hazards chapter, there's a mention of a general aviation airport that may div- may be developed on the landing strip sites in the northwest corner of the UGB area. So that's like in the, basically, what's the light industrial area right now. And so we'd like to know if council wishes to preserve this reference to a possible future airport in the industrial area, or if they'd like to remove it or somehow change it. There's also a question of whether council would like to allow for the expansion of Valley View Airport or a future airports. And then just a general question, if there's any, any revisions or additional policies that council would like to include in chapter six. And again, these will all be summarized at the end, so you don't have to remember them. Okay, moving on to chapter ten, subjective seven was drafted to, or yeah, number seven and overhaul, transportation policy number eleven, those two specifically aim to preserve and protect the airport. Objective seven ensures the continued safe and effective operation of the Valley View Airport while minimizing or mitigating adverse, adverse impacts on surrounding residents or property owners. And then overall, transportation policy eleven states that the city will implement policies and actions that allow for the airport to continue to operate in its current location into the foreseeable future. And again, staff would just like some feedback from council as to whether that language sounds good, if it should be revised, anything added to it, subtracted. And then moving on to chapter twelve on urbanization, we just drafted some slight changes to this, this chapter, just we removed some less relevant language and added a few small clarifications. And we'd just like to know if there's any revisions to our changes or any additional policies relating to airports that you'd like to include in chapter eleven. And here is that summary of these questions that we're looking for clarification on. But we'd also like to hear whatever questions that you might have about any of the other drafts, code sections, or any of the sections of the comp plan policy amendments. And with that, I guess I hand it, hand it back to council.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So that's everything on this that we're talking about tonight, is that right?
Yeah, well, we want to go ahead and discuss these questions, or might have some questions. But I'll, you probably have questions also. So if we want to address, I don't know if Taylor wants to leave this, since you're on Zoom, or Alan, but they hit that first question is for regarding chapter six, does council wish to preserve the reference to a possible future airport in the industrial area? I'm not completely familiar because the one that's there on Hypal Road is outside the UGB.
I was just going to chime in on that when I had that flag before, seeing the question too, there's, there's no context to let us know what that was about. So it seems like when it was drafted at the time, there was probably discussion or something like that. So from my standpoint, it just seemed out of the blue to have that in there. So again, this is talking about a, a, a future. What does it say, if and when, or if and when an airport were to be developed or put in, and basically near the industrial park? We'll address some noise issues or something like that at that time. And to me, it seemed out of the blue, unnecessary.
I don't think we're going to get big enough to need two airports in the city, so I think it's kind of a
Are we, are we catching the point on that, Taylor, or Alan? Are we understanding that correctly?
Yeah, for sure. I mean, it really did seem like a conversation that happened forty-something years ago and got kind of fossilized in the comp plan and then just never revisited. But I, I don't know, I, yeah, I, it, it was unclear to us as well, so.
So basically, this question is being posed to us so that the council, the council that sits here in forty years, when the UGB does move out to Hypal Road, then that airport will, the airport that's out there with the, for the skydiving and stuff would have, there would be a comp plan in place.
I, I suppose so. I don't know if it would preclude that if we removed it right now. I, I think, like, my thought around it was just that it, it, like, commissioners, or sorry, counselor, sir, was saying, it just really did seem out of the blue. And while we're going through the language and removing kind of super, superfluous or irrelevant pieces, I, I thought we might take it out if, or just present it to you to see if, if, if we leave it in or take it out.
Yeah, I think it's pretty much proven itself. If you look at the layout of what we've got going on the industrial and around it right now, it kind of takes out the possibility of a future airport right away, due to the space that you have to deal with. So I think we can eliminate that from, from the list.
And that wouldn't, that wouldn't take any protection away from the airstrip that's north of the UGB. I mean, that would be a totally different conversation, is that right?
That would, that would be a pre-existing non-conforming use.
Yeah.
At the time it came inside of the city's UGB, we would take a look at the state's classic classification and use. And then we would, we would be able to craft some specific criteria to that airport, if, if that's how they wanted it to go. We, we'd, under state law, have a lot of flexibility.
That's far enough in the future. We might all have flying cards by then anyways.
So, so in this, so in this case, the answer to that first one is, we're not going to preserve that reference to the future airport? Okay, all right, and then does council wish to allow for the expansion of Valley View Airport and of future airports? Do we have questions, or how?
That's also a hard question to answer, considering the development that's going on in our area. We don't really know what kind of space we're going to have with the developments that are going in right now. So an expansion to that airport might be a possibility at this point. I mean, what do you think? I'm kind of curious to see what the people that are going to be affected by have to say on it before I can answer that question.
But I think from our standpoint right now, we would say, we, we don't want to stop this until we get some input from others as well too. And we're talking expansion, we're talking for airport purposes as well too, right? As opposed to, who knows what, food cart pods or something like that.
This would be if, if we wanted to preserve some extra area for a runway or, or something of that nature. And, and again, this, the city can't, is people that kind of follow the Aurora Airport. I don't even know what to call it. Intrigued, I guess. People, we don't just unilaterally have the ability to do stuff, we have to coordinate it all to the state. But what we would have the ability to do is if we wanted to kind of preserve some, set aside some areas for that sort of traditional airport sort of thing, we might have the ability to do that.
Any more questions over here?
No.
But I think we just entered into a conversation about it being a, a private-public, not so much a public. So here we are, planning to put something in there that would be more public and less private. I, I, I don't know if we're really looking at the right picture here. If we want to preserve land to put in something that makes it more appealing to the public versus the private. So it's kind of like catch twenty-two here.
Yeah, it would be probably be good for the public who are going to speak, make note of these questions. And then when we get to that, you can go ahead and speak to that as well. Yeah.
That'd be good.
Okay. Other?
I mean, the, the only use for expanding the runway would be larger planes for it to come in or something. And so being that's the, the only thing on the public-private ground of that were, would be because they want to use different conflagration. I said that right? But that would be for like fighting fires, things like that. They might need larger planes, so they may want to expand runway at that point. But that's the only thing I can see a scenario where that might fit in. But like I said, a lot of these questions are really, it's going to affect the people that are sitting in this room here the most. And so I'm kind of curious to hear what they have to say.
Does that, Taylor, answer enough, and Alan, answer enough questions in the chapter six section? Is that not clear?
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, for now, for now, that's great. Did you have a follow-up question, Taylor?
I know.
Okay, so then for chapter ten, this is the draft policy language that would help preserve the airport. Does the council approve of the proposed language as written in chapter ten? Are there any revisions or additional policies relating to airports that the council would like to include? And that, I'm not sure what page that is on.
Did we skip number three under comp plan?
Did I skip that one? I probably did.
That one's just kind of a general thing that's kind of encapsulated in number four here. It's just basically asking if there's any other language or revisions within that entire chapter that you would like to see. So we had some specific questions, and then that's, the third is just kind of a general.
And just real quick, from my standpoint, I'll be honest, there are some things that, that don't resonate with me. I, at least I don't understand what they are, like conditional uses permitted. C and D, government structure or use of land and public utility substations is required with safeguards against harm to adjacent or abutting property owners. So from my standpoint, I'm, I'm, I'm good with, with what's in here now, looking for more input from others as well too, as we proceed through this to help me and the rest of us understand some of this.
And I think I'm in agreement with that. I think I need to hear a little bit more before I make that call from people that are in this room and probably, you know, other people that might know more than me about the issue, because I don't want to make a mistake when we're trying to overlay for such a far reach, you know, so. So what else you need from us on this one? Anything else on this page?
Then, under chapter twelve, any other, and I'm having a hard time tracking through the packet here.
We didn't really address three on this page. It's, it's just about the objective seven and transportation policy eleven in the transportation chapter. We just want to get a little feedback as, as to whether council thinks that those are, those kind of capture the protective like, includes enough protective language for the airport in those. I can also read them back or
Yeah, why don't you just read those back real quick?
Okay, actually, yeah, I'm going to go back. Yep, there they are. Okay, so objective seven and transportation policy eleven are here. So objective seven says, states ensure the continued safe and effective operation of the Valley View Airport while minimizing or mitigating any adverse impacts on surrounding residents or property owners. So maybe let's just, just take a look at that one first and see, see what you think.
All right.
I think, you know, just, just looking at it, it seems fine. I do have a question on that, though. We've talked about kind of a I think, you know, just, just looking at it, it seems fine. Uh, I do have a question on that though. We've talked about kind of a lack of a sense of urgency around this. Balanced sense of urgency might be a better way to put it. We know we need to get something in the, the next couple of years, but. Um, just should a developer swoop in and decide to start building houses adjacent to or in? Um, does, does, do we, do we need a bigger sense of urgency for this right now? Or um, can we take our time and make sure we've got what's in place to make sure that we want to preserve the airport here in Estacada?
Taylor, you want to field that one?
Sure, yeah. So right now, because the airport is not incorporated into city limits. It is under Clackamas County's jurisdiction and most of those surrounding properties are also under Clackamas County jurisdiction. I don't know if the county would permit. A, like a land, like a, a partition, a land division, a small land division. For a property that's within an urban growth boundary. My understanding is that. If there's a property inside of an urban growth boundary and someone wants to divide it, the county says you need to go talk to the city and try to annex and do it through the city. Um, but they might allow partitions. I'm not sure. They would not be allowed to do any like major subdivision. In that area without first annexing into city limits, um, which some of those, some of those properties are eligible for. Annexation, um. But yeah, beside, beside the point, um. Basically, right now, if the properties around the airport. Wanted to build some new homes through Clackamas, you know, without annexing. Um, Clackamas County would permit, you know, to a, to a certain degree, you know, it wouldn't be very dense, but they. Could probably permit some new um, home development in that area and the current county code. Really is not very restrictive on what's allowed to happen. That's part of the reason that O D A um. Gave us their comments saying, well, Clackamas County's code doesn't actually even quite meet the state requirements at this point or the state guidelines. Um, so you know, they provided some suggested additions to that to make it more protective of the airport. Um, and so all that is to say that currently if someone was going to come in and wanted to build a new home or some homes. Um, at a density that's allowed there. Um, if they're doing that through Clackamas County's current zoning. They would be. Um, it would be, the airport would be less protected than if the city adopts this zoning. Annexes the area, applies the overlay. Um, now we actually have that protection in place. I'm not sure if I explained that.
So that's, so that's why we want to get this done later this fall or by the first, around the first of the year at the absolute latest, right? We don't want to wait a couple of years. We want to, or do we, and then we could always change it. Like if we need to change it to tighten it up, if something happens, we can change it, but we need to get this on the books. In the next several months. Is that what we're saying? We're going to do it sooner than later?
So prac- practically speaking, if, let's say there was subdivision annexation. And O D A reached out to us and said, hey, you're not in compliance. How it worked last time is I said. We're also on a hundred and twenty day clock. So you need to provide us with clear and objective criteria, which we would require. And they didn't. So we had said, could you please, could I ask them, could you please point to the regulations? That wouldn't allow residential, because as I'm reading, whatever I'm reading. Other than some setbacks for flight pass and things of that nature for a private airport residential is allowed. So you need to give us clear and objective criteria that we can impose. Otherwise, we have a huge legal risk from the applicant and they didn't. So in the future, what we would do if we got one of these and we didn't have something in place. Would be to point out the same things like these are the reasons we believe that this meets the R one criteria, which is our criteria that will be allowed under the zone. And then to the extent that you have clear and objective standards that we can impose on the applicant. Because whatever we impose has to be legally defensible. If we got something from the Oregon Department of Aviation, I think it's reasonable that. We could say um, that as long as it didn't. Um, contradict our code. So it, it would put the burden on them. Um, because what we're, what we're imposing with a lot of this stuff is. Are, are there already height limits in the R one zone? So I, I think we, we would be, we're not in an ideal position. And it creates a lot of extra steps for staff, but we're not going to have kind of a doomsday scenario if we don't have something in place. With that said, it makes sense to have something in place so that a future development can develop or can go know exactly what they can and can't do in the zone. Which is really why we want the zoning in place to educate the public and also to provide a conversation with the people that are most impacted. Who are the people that are already there so that they can kind of explain what their vision and values are for the area. And if we can legally, you know, give them what they want, a lot of times that's what you as a council try and do is try and keep the neighbors happy. And um, you know, with an eye towards the future.
Another question. At one point you mentioned um, R one and M one. And I was one, is that, are those conditional uses? I got kind of lost in that. And I was wondering if, if those are, those were going to be allowed in there.
No.
I didn't understand what that meant.
Yeah, so um, so the, the base zone would require. Standards like development standards, just like in R one, you have, you know, the section, it's usually zero four zero that just outlines exactly. The way that things can be built with the setbacks are um, height requirements uh, that kind of thing. And for the airport zone, our proposal was to um, for all the residential uses. That we would just apply whatever standards are in the R one at the time. And then for all non-residential uses, so any kind of commercial or light industrial uses, we would apply the standards of the M one zone. Does that make more sense?
That does make, it does make sense. I just wonder if that's like, R one is like a seventy-five hundred square foot lot. Is that what, is that right? And then, but right now they have like two acre lots out there and it seemed. Uh, but we can't make it any in the, if they annex into the city, we don't have bigger lot sizes than that, right?
That's a really good point, Melanie. We could, a lot, we could require larger lot sizes for residential uses. In the airport zone specifically.
Yeah, we can write it how we want.
So we could require, I mean, is that something that you would, I'm, I'm kind of concerned about, you know, stacking houses right next to.
And I think some of them have hangers on their property and would that allow enough room for access to a hanger on their property? If their lot size was seventy-five hundred square feet.
Sure, they probably, they probably wouldn't have a hanger if they had to have that small of a, a lot, I would guess. But I don't know. And then the, and, and then the M one, I don't know what kind of, like, trying to extrapolate what, like, what if? What are you going to have to be asked to approve? What would somebody want to put out there? What kind of shop would go out there that might be M one?
Because you don't want something in there with, in a potential area where a plane crashes into and it can get like fireworks factory or something like that.
Right, we're not talking about allowing the same uses that are allowed in the light industrial zone, just the same standards. So the, the, that the buildings have to get built and the site has to get built too. So like the setbacks, the height, like the physical development.
So if they're building the hanger or so, or a set of hangers, there would, that'd be the M one standards. Okay, okay.
Yeah.
That makes more sense.
And it sounds like to me this is more important than just letting it go. I think the people that live there need protection. Uh, you know, I, the county and the state are my friends. I understand that, but I don't always trust their judgment, unfortunately. So uh, I think we should have more urgency on this than not. But at the same time, I need more time to go over this before I'm ready to make these decisions.
Okay.
So I, I asked that we put this off maybe till the next meeting, give me time to research some of this. And hear from the people that are here tonight, if that's okay, before I decide on.
We're, we're not making any decisions tonight.
Well, no.
But to give more feedback, yeah.
Yeah, I want to make sure I've got all the facts before I, you know, just determine what we're going to do and not going to do.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay.
It would, oh, sorry. It would be really helpful for us, whatever. Um, I mean, you guys have done great already. Giving some, pointing out some specific feedback and um, you know, preferences or concerns. So if there are, if you do already have some specific concerns or after we hear from some members of the public. Um, that generate those specific concerns, it would be super helpful for us to receive those tonight. Either in this meeting or afterwards. Um, just so that when we do bring it back, we can make sure to gather whatever extra information. Would be needed to address those.
Okay, that sounds reasonable. All right.
I, I'd be kind of curious to see if uh, there's any cities in Oregon with similar size that have an airport that are. Kind of what they've done to protect their airport in their area and what kind of things they've done. And I'm guessing the, one of the airport, uh, the new owners here, no? Or I, yeah, this, I, to get someone with some expertise to answer some of these questions too would be nice. So.
Yeah. Okay, so let's go on with the questions and we'll see if we can help you kind of understand what direction we're going to go in then.
Okay, yeah. So we were here, I believe, we're talking about objective seven. Um, and that got us off. In a very productive conversation. Um, so yeah, we're just kind of checking to see if the language looks good. Um, I, I'm getting the, the feeling that um. Councilors want to sit with this a little bit before they make any kind of like final um. Yeah, I think that always totally makes sense, totally makes sense. Um, I'll just read out the transportation policy eleven, just, just. Just so it's, it's fresh in the mind. The city will implement policies and actions that follow, that allow, sorry. Allow for the Valley View Airport to continue to operate in its current location into the foreseeable future. And again, these two were crafted with the, the idea of offering the most kind of policy protection that we could for the airport.
Yeah, I think everybody's in line on those two. They sound reasonable.
Great. Okay. And then just the last, the last question is um, you're just very general. Any revisions or additional policies relating to these three chapters or anywhere else really? Um, yeah, this is incredibly broad.
No, I think they're fine. Honestly, I think what the point we, we need to hear from people to really move forward and get more information. We're kind of.
Sitting stone.
This is just, yeah, yeah, I'm saying, we just, we try to answer any of these questions until we get more information. So I think we're going to go around it, around on it.
Yeah. Okay, any more questions here? Pretty good. We're all good with that.
All right, thank you.
So are we able to, I'm not sure exactly how this goes for public meeting rules. Are we going to hear from the public during this agenda item? Because that is the end of our um, presentation here. Um, can.
You could continue this agenda item until after public comment. So that would allow you to, that could be made by a motion second vote. Um, so the understanding is there's some kind of expertise in the audience that would like to be heard. Um, and after you hear that feedback and then a, it, you could give some guidance. Um, this meeting um, or some preliminary guidance, then really take some more time and consider it. And then bring it back at a future meeting, but you do have a lot of flexibility.
Okay, I would propose this to table until next meeting. Because it gives a chance there, hear all the information, take it in, think about it, propose your questions, look further into it and then come back with more information at that point. But then continue the conversation right after the questions because we're still haven't, we don't have time to reflect on it or anything yet. So.
Yeah, and I'm kind of in the same place. I want reflection time. Plus, I want to look into this a little bit closer uh, with my sources and see, you know, how this all plays out.
Would it be this fever if I just move to table then?
I don't, I don't think, I think the conversation will be over. We don't need to extend it.
Yeah, we can just put it on an agenda item.
Yeah, we'll move into an agenda item on our next council meeting or the one after whichever one it fits in uh, the best. Uh, we thank you, Taylor, and we thank the team for everything that you did tonight. That was good, uh, giving us good clarification. We thank staff for being there as well on those questions. So thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, next on council business, another hot topic, water usage and code discussion.
Okay, so um, this is, well, this is the next uh, topic under council business and one, after we discuss this, then we'll move on to the um. Citizen and community group comments and that's when we'll have you all share. Yes. So right now, we just wanted to bring up the topic of water usage. Um, it's been um, on, a- as we come around to summer. Um, the plant has been working extra hard to keep up with the water demand and I had sent out some um. Like overall monthly water production numbers so that you could see how it's kind of growing over the years. And uh, we're going to just kind of turn this over to Peter to talk about it. We do have a draft policy, our draft code. Um, ordinance in the packet that we could go through and talk about. Um, we really feel like the best way to address this initially is to. Get in touch with the HOAs and get them to respond to stop requiring people to water. Some people obviously want to water. It's very important to them. I think a lot of people would rather just slow down on that um, in the summertime and that would align more with our conservation goals. Uh, but then they get fined if they don't keep their grass really green in the, throughout the summer. So I'm going to turn this over to Peter and we'll just. We want, this is just basically a discussion to see where we want to go.
Sure. So one of the things we've mentioned at a prior meeting had been um, had been water use in our plant. And um, and then if there could be some voluntary public outreach. Uh, real, r- r- related to conservation. And after that conversation, staff was contacted by a number of people from different HOAs. That basically were asking the city for help. And what they were saying is my HOA is requiring me to water my lawn. Um, if I don't water my lawn or if my lawn isn't green, I'm getting fined by my HOA. Um, I want to conserve water and, and uh, is there anything the city can do to help us? Um, and that's really interesting because it's an interesting question because homeowner associations are kind of their own legal entity. And, and they have their own bylaws and, and rules. So I, we were, I was looking at this issue of what can we do? And um, what we can do is essentially, and we, we looked to some other cities. Um, to see if they had dealt with this. One of the things we can potentially do is A, get in touch with the HOAs and say. We have these, these water issues. We don't want them to be worse. Will you voluntarily agree to stop? Filing people and requiring them to water their lawns. Uh, then the other thing is we could adopt code that would allow. The city to find HOAs, um, the HOA for requiring people to water. So um, again, there are some people that have a pristinely green lawn and that's important to them and they're willing to pay the water bill. That's not what we're necessarily trying to get at. What we're trying to get at is people that are looking to do their part. And they're being forced to, to use water. Um, and then the, the other things, they're just responsible watering. So um, almost anyone that's been on a walk with sprinklers has probably seen people watering their sidewalks and streets. That's not ideal. And so that's the other thing from a code enforcement. That's, you know, a clear and objective criteria that would allow us to hopefully in the beginning say, hey. Could you work on this? We don't want to find you, but then if it continues to have those sort of fines. So we took a first crack at some um, code language. We tried to make it. Is clear and objective as criteria uh, is possible while understanding there are a whole lot of different ways you guys could go with this. And you might not want to regulate it at all or take enforcement action against the HOA. So we're not necessarily sure. Um, but we wanted to come up with some language um, for your, to aid in your discussion today.
Hey, thank you.
Very blunt, I, I'm not going to support this at all. This is, this is absolutely ridiculous. Um, but I got a better approach. The, instead of trying to nitpick little things that come up, the HOAs are doing. Most people do not like HOAs in their area because they cause problems like this. So I propose a different approach and that is to potentially just. Fix the problem and that is to limit HOA's capabilities in the city to where they only allowed to regulate. Common use areas. So obviously they can't do anything on public property. That's, they don't have the authority for that. Restrict them from regulating people's personal property and sell them that they can regulate common areas. That may be if there's a park that they own in the area, if they have a common area for signs, something like that that they manage. Let them regulate that, let them deal with their HOAs on that one, but limit them in the city to controlling what people do on their properties. And that would fix the problem because then they couldn't tell them to water their yard, find them, find them for parking, all the other things we've got coming up over the last couple of years. But these HOAs have really extended way beyond what they should be and half the HOAs don't even manage for people in the city. So. It's a good problem to solve that, but this right here. it may look good to solve one little problem with the HOAs, but putting this in place can easily escalate into other issues. If your water and your yard, I mean, the way this is written, if your water in your yard, your sprinkler runs water off your yard into the street, you can get fined five hundred dollars. If your spring, if you're, if you're washing your yard and you don't have a cap on your hose and it runs water into the street, you can get fined five hundred dollars. Now granted, that may not be the intent, but you can't write laws with an intent of one person and what's your ideas at the time, you get to write laws according to how it may be used today and tomorrow. And this, the the broadness of this and the very particular reason this doesn't seem like it's a smart move, instead let's fix the problem where it's at, and that's what the HOAs.
I'm curious to see if that can be adopted to regulate common use areas.
There, I mean, there, because the HOA and their CCNRs are private contractual rights. There are, it's extremely limited to how a city can intervene in that. The, the legal process is that the city doesn't even review the CCNRs, they're actually reviewed at the county level and that's true of every county in the state. And then the county's review is what has traditionally been limited to are there any CCNRs that violate federal law? So that would be, you know, restrictions based on something like someone's race. There have been some recent laws in Oregon that deal with accessory dwellings, so now they look at that too, to make sure they don't prohibit accessory dwellings. But beyond that, they have very wide, because it's a collection of people agreeing to contract with each other. They have a pretty wide grant, so and that, that's where the the rub is with this, is that the city council and community have goals related to water conservation. And if an HOA is requiring people to water their lawn, that that's the, that runs the upset at. Now, one thing we could do is to ask the county to review and prohibit that sort of watering language from the CCNRs. But I think that will be up to the county to decide whether to do that or not.
So I just want to get this straightened with you on the record, you're saying that in the state of Oregon, there's no cities that can actually regulate or have regulated and their code by ordinance, a homeowner's association.
Could we intervene in their CCNRs and try and regulate them? Is that what you're asking?
By ordinance, are you saying there's no cities in the state of Oregon that have, right, that have put ordinances in either banning or limiting HOAs to either A, common areas or banning them from the city altogether?
I'm not aware of any. I mean, the thing you have to remember with HOAs, that they're individuals contracting with each other that refer to, and they can get very restrictive, like the color of paint on your house. I mean, and and that's not for everybody, but there's certain people that want those protections, and so it really becomes hard for a now there's some cities that, or at least census designated places like Blackview Ranch that every property in there is part of the HOA or Little Whale Cove, that will be another example. But that's a different scenario than can a city prohibit HOAs? I should, I, I'm not aware of any in Oregon.
I was just gonna say, I'm not aware, I haven't done research if there's any cities, but I, we did talk to Clackamas River Water Providers Group. I did, just because they potentially would have extra water rights, maybe, I think it's unlikely, but just wanted to let the, I just wanted to get them to weigh in on our situation where we have two point six million gallons a day, which is, we're not anywhere near reaching that, what we're, what we're struggling with is kind of a daily peak use of water, and so like our peak day this year was one point five, but then it kind of bounces down to one point four, one point two. Kurt said on Fourth of July, which would typically be a high water use day, because everybody's out with their parties and it's hot and we were at one point four MGD, and so we're not, it's not like it's an extremely urgent issue where we have to, we're not trying to say people stop watering everything or stop, you know, we're not trying to restrict that. But this is something that's gonna come up, we're gonna work with the engineers to maximize the plant, it should be able to produce two million gallons a day. And we want to make sure that we can do that, but when I brought, did bring it up to the Clackamas River Water Providers Group, they chuckled at me slightly and wished me luck at working with HOAs, because it's, but we would like, and Elena has reached out. And they didn't give her too much of the time of day yet, but yeah.
Yeah, basically said, we don't have any time in our schedule to talk to you.
And so we we will reach out to them and, but it might take, we could bring this back at a later time too, it might take implementing something, and we're not saying they can't say, you know, you have to keep your lawn tidy, you have to keep it mowed, you have to keep the weeds out, and there's certain things I'm sure that you, you know, a community might want to implement. That's not going to impact, it might be annoying to some people, but it's not going to impact our water system. But requiring and finding people if they're not watering their lawn enough is something we feel like we should address with them, and we'll try to do that without a code in place, but this is a sample that if we wanted to work on, if you want to.
And and this was response to people saying, I don't want to have to water my lawn, but I'll be fined if I don't, is there something you, the city can do about it?
Right, and I, I, I agree with Joel on, you know, I don't want to find people for watering, like accidentally their sprinkler gets bumped and then they're watering the sidewalk, however, I'm not cool with HOAs bringing down the hammer because somebody doesn't have a lush green lawn in the middle of July and August, that's ridiculous, so I tend to, I'm as, I I have the policy of as, I'm as nice as you'll let me be. So I would appreciate more of a soft approach. Approaching the HOA saying, hey, we, you know, you may have this in your CCNRs, but can you, you know, we're we're conserving water this time of year. Don't require your residents to keep a lush green lawn in the middle of summer, just, just kind of, you know, let's go that route first before we start trying to implement, yeah, that's, that's where I'm at.
And I, I, I agree there too, I agree with Council Hughes and Council Lickkey from that standpoint too, that I, we, I don't think any of us want to be penalizing the residents of Estacada for watering issues. And actually had soften written in here as well too. But i- it seems like an education program or or something like that, that we, if we could do something like that to start, and even with, with measurable goals or something that we could track what's going on now, and we could see if we do some education and then we could measure against that, what what has been happening, what's happening since we started this voluntary education piece. And then if we're not hitting those goals, then we can come down harder, and I think on the HOAs would be great if we could do something like that too, to try to keep things in check there.
Okay, and I'm, I'm in agreement here, you know, an HOA telling us they don't have time to talk to us is unacceptable. Okay, we're a city, we've authorized these developments against better judgment, you know, when the building boom and we have to do that through Luba, right? Right, so we're conditioned to do so, so they should have the concern enough to say, hey, we'll sit down with you and we'll work out a plan that works for all of us, so they cannot make time, doesn't work for me. I suggest we get a little more intense about it. As far as penalizing the people of Estacada for water usage, I'm, I'm not on that page. We're not there, we don't need to do that, but we do need to do is have a discussion and figure out how we're gonna work this out, and I think we can do that as a group. Along with the homeowners association, so I ask that we contact them one more time through your way. And then if that doesn't work, let me know and we'll find another way. But that said, I, I think that's where we need to go with this, and I think, you know, looking at penalties and stuff like that, you know, bigger cities do that.
And this wasn't intend, it's not intended to necessarily penalize the
This was intended to penalize the HOA, because the other complaint that we got is in the common areas. The sprinklers are just running, a- and I think it's, it's where maybe the developers have completed phase one and now they're going to phase two. And they want people that drive through phase one to see this like lush. But that's really going up against the wishes of the homeowners who are saying, hey, you know, this doesn't seem right and they're watering the common areas so much the water is rolling down the street. Which I can understand, because I'm sure they're, those residents are then having to pay for that, so.
And two, I've heard from a few residents in those subdivisions that outside agencies are running their homeowners
Yes.
Association. Now, under the bylaws, when you have a homeowner, as I've been through this, they have to be the ones to form the group that runs the HOA, not an outside agency. So the developers can put the squeeze on the outside agency to make sure that everybody's keeping their lawns green and everything when the people aren't even involved in it, so that seems a little outside the perimeter and probably some legal issues in that that we could tackle if we need to. But like I said, this is a discussion I think we need to have with them, so let's try again. And see what we can get on.
Yeah, I will say from, from like the practical enforcement, what our first option would not be, you know, penalizing them, finding them, because we do have through Clackamas River Providers, people have the opportunity for free to do a landscape water audit and they'll come out and they'll help you address your issues on how much water you're using and how often you're watering. And it's free for all of our residents, and so that would probably be our first option is, hey, here's a free service, you can sign up that will help you be better stewards of water.
Yeah.
Rather than finding people, because that was never our intent to find any of our residents.
That's good, that's good, because, you know, I, I think they've got enough on their plate with the economy the way it is right now. But that said, do we have anything else?
No, thank you for that direction. And yeah, we'll, we'll reach out to the HOAs and try to work with them. And we will be working on optimizing the plant so it can produce that full two million gallons a day. In the winter time, we're running about half a million, like point five, point six, point seven, right in there, so it's, it's not a, like what the water that people are using in their, inside their homes is definitely a summertime issue and so we'll just try to do some education, reach out to the HOAs and then let you know how it's going.
All right, thank you for that. All right, moving along, we are at the next citizen and community group comments, I have three forms in front of me. First on my list, I have Helen Druken, I think it is. Druken, oh, I was close.
My name is Helen Druken and I live on Sunview Lane, and we moved into the Flying Community in two thousand and sixteen. And we don't own a plane, but we enjoyed watching neighboring planes take off and land. We also enjoy watching the helicopters train, it's just a unique experience. So we were attracted to the quiet country-like setting and the small community feel of Estacada. And so we just want to preserve that environment. Also, we're supportive of minimally expanding some activity at the airport, but definitely not interested in heavy traffic. Because this is where we live, we want quiet evenings for barbecues and whatnot. So in that regard, I would like you to include protective language to preserve that for us. The airport brings strategic value to the community as we've heard her indicate to us. And in the disaster situation, it brings quick relief, and if you remember in twenty twenty, when we had the fire evacuations, we had a drone team out there on the airstrip checking and monitoring the status of the fire, and in twenty seventeen, we had firefighters from Idaho fly in. So I know that it's a airport is a gateway to the world and we want to maintain that access. At the same time, we have concerns where I heard tonight that in regards to annexation, I don't know if that includes water and septic, but we invested our personal funds to establish that on our properties, and if we annex that, how will, like, who takes control of that? And our CCNRs also say that we're responsible for maintaining the airstrip. And so if you expand, expand the airport, are we expected to foot the bill for paving, for warehouses, for whatever, you know, we, we're just like regular people and we don't have a lot of financial extra money to just give to this, and so we want you to keep that in mind when you're considering it. And you were mentioning all these various chapters, I guess as homeowners that would be mostly impacted by any of these changes, we'd like an opportunity to review those chapters to see how that might affect us. Bottom line, I guess we, I would like that you would implement standards that would protect the homeowners so that we'd continue to have a nice, quiet residential neighborhood, because we moved out here to live in our forever home and we don't want to be forced out and look elsewhere, elsewhere for that. And there was some discussion about expanding warehouse industrial. And so I'm just concerned that maybe at ten o'clock at night, I would still, or nine thirty, I would hear grinding noises or whatever happens in a warehouse if they're expanding the airport too much. And so I just appreciate your time and I'm out of time.
Thank you. Did that just perfect, you done that? Okay, next one I have is Beverly, Beely.
Do you want to talk questions of me, if I take you a little bit longer than three minutes? I don't mind telling you the history of the airport, because my husband and I were the second owners of the airport. So my name is Beverly Beely, I now reside in Surprise, Arizona. And I just happened to be in town and somebody called me because the airport has just changed hands again. So my husband and I bought the airport from Harold Wagner in nineteen ninety-three with the dream of making it an airpark, which is what those two acre parcels, I believe there might be twenty of them. So there's, so we used a flexible lot design from the county and were allowed to make two acre parcels, there's one three acre and then there's some miscellaneous ones on the other side of the airport, but it was one of ten privately owned, public use airports and the only way that I could ever say somebody couldn't land there is if it was to harm our property or theirs, that's why you do not see altar lights coming in, because they did that and we banned them from the airport, but any, any aircraft flying talks into the blind and they tell people that are in the proximity that they are going to land at that airport, so it has been a privately owned, it's the second longest privately owned airport in the state of Oregon. Only second to Sun River. So when we bought it, we bought it with the intention of making that airpark, so that's called the Valley View Airpark. And all of those people have runway rights except for one. And so that tied up those properties in the CCNRs, we said that they could not make them any smaller than that. For redevelopment of any other homes on the properties, because of the wells that they put in and the septic systems, you can't have them closer than a certain amount of space to the neighbors. So anyway, it then, we sold it in twenty ten to Michael Siz and Michael actually was the one that got the money. I, I will be perfectly truthful with you, I have no idea what he spent it on. It was not maintained on the airport, so maybe he did a little resurfacing and had some type of thing with Oregon Aeronautics, but for your edification, there is an Oregon Aeronautics Division, they have an airport bill that was signed into probably about ten, fifteen years ago. Okay, and that bill gave an overlay to every airport in the state of Oregon, so that's on file and that might give you some help with just looking at that, because it's pretty specific on what the airport zones, the height requirements, because we actually had all the requirements for them that we maintained. It, and to your question of whether it can be lengthened, it cannot be, because unfortunately, we spoke with the first developer that was going to develop on the land. After that, other property people came in and they changed the direction. So at the end of the berm, that is the actual landing strip is up there. They put that berm there to show that that was the end of the space. There are homes now all the way across the end of that, so they can't expand There are homes now all the way across the end of that. So they can't expand lengthwise. The only way they could expand is widthwise, which would put them into some real water issues. Cause there is a pond up there. So um anyway, it is now sold again. And this man, this is why I'm here. I'm very upset that that was my life for twenty eight years. And he's a developer. And. It's, it's my thought along with a lot of these people, because he's trying to take away their runway rights. I still own a uh FBO building on there. He's never contacted me. But I feel like he's try, he's already bought two additional properties. I think he's trying to set himself up for a development up there. It's just my opinion. So do you have any questions that I can answer? Cause I have pretty much knowledge of any area that's off that airport. I've walked it all.
No, we appreciate you coming up and giving us a little history background on that. That was good.
Yeah.
That was needed. Um, but I think we're going to go through this pretty, pretty good with, you know, staff and, and outside agencies. I want to make sure that we're on board with everything that we need to do to proceed with this, long before we get to that point. So.
And I think that uh you know Ralph Hadley.
I do.
At the, and he has been in this forever and ever. He can tell you the bill, because he. He paid about ninety thousand dollars in back money for getting that bill passed. So. He's your go-to guy on airports. And um I would really take him up on just chatting.
I'll sit down with him, have some coffee.
Yeah, he's a character.
All right.
If you want to leave your contact info in case there's questions from the planning team, that'd be great.
All right, uh Denise Bell? Oh, Dad, sorry. All right, appreciate that. Yeah. Okay, that's all I have in front of me. If there's any more that wish to speak tonight?
If there's any attendees online that wanted to speak, please raise your hand.
I think we got it. Anybody up there?
Nope.
No.
Member in the audience.
Okay, can you, you have a little uh, one of these sheets right here to speak? All right, yeah, why don't you step up there and then fill one after for me and, and hand it in to staff so we have that on record.
My name's Ralph Hudson, been on the airport twenty years. I'm a commercial pilot and uh. Flight instructor, built four airplanes. So I've kind of real close to the airplane community. A couple of thoughts that came up with this discussion, we're talking about expansion. I think we could probably get another five hundred feet off the north end of the runway. But it would require relocating Deuce Road, and they actually did that over in Hillsboro. They moved the roads so that they can modify runway one, two over there. So it's possible, but not very practical. Airport's big enough to handle light twins, two motors, uh piston, but not jets. So there, it has some, some capability to this point, which would, could not be expanded beyond that kind of an airplane. As far as the uh, oh, I went to the, the Oregon State Aeronautical Meeting over in Madras a couple of weeks ago. And we talked to them and they have a uh. We asked them what power they have over management of airports. And they virtually said none regarding private airports. Their focus is truly in the public area. So Portland, Malino, Troutdale, Hillsboro, they're the airports that uh they handle. And the uh. Private airports, they don't really do anything with except for things like clearance. Protection zones, making the airport safe for operation. And they have guidelines that uh provide that information. County has the rules on CCNRs. And in our CCNRs, we have the word perpetuity. I see you're using the word foreseeable use. And we like that other word a little better if it means that we can stay there a little longer without being displaced. By conversion, by uh a housing development. So that's about all I have. Uh I would offer my services. If you want to talk to me more, um I've got a.
We thank you for that piece. We appreciate you.
All right, thank you.
And uh fill out that paper so we have you on record so I, we can contact if we need to. All right, thank you for that. That's the last I have in front of me tonight. So we will go into mayor and council reports and comments.
Mister Mayor, would you mind if I just really quickly reply to the concerns we heard at first about annexation?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted, I'm not sure if that person's still in the audience, but just for the record, um the city does not annex property. Um unless requested by the property owner. So the city would not force the annexation. Of any of those individual residential properties if that person didn't want to annex their property. Um so don't worry about that. And then um the other thing, the other concern that she mentioned was about expansion. You know, if they expanded the runway, would that cause them to pay more in their HOA fees or, or whatever it was? Um, what we're talking about in these proposed amendments would simply be allowing the expansion. So the airport owner could choose to expand, which would be a negotiation with all the HOA members. Um but the city would not itself cause the expansion. It would just be allowing that to happen if the owners um decided to. Okay, thanks. Just wanted to clarify.
All right, thank you. I hope that helped you with your question on that back there. Okay, great. And then, and now we're at uh uh mayor and council reports and comments. I'm going to start off with Jerry tonight, because I think Joel has a closing thing he wants to speak on tonight.
It's all saved in the last. So I just want to thank everybody for coming. Thank you all for your input. Um it's a, you know, getting community input is what helps us make our, make our decisions. So I appreciate you guys for that. Uh appreciate you guys all for being here. Um and staff, you're amazing as always. Uh appreciate all the work you put in. Um my opinion, we have the best staff in any city in the state of Oregon. So um appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, everybody, for coming. I'm really excited that we have another crowd here. Um it's really nice for you to be engaged. I'm really happy about that. Um, I do want to point out that uh Estacada Area Art Commission is having a. Photography workshop this Thursday at Ant Farm at seven PM. And that, so that should be really nice to attend. And I was going to say something to Council Lickkey, but I will not this time.
I have one, one more thing to say about Arts Commission. Also, the Arts Commission is having art at the creek um on July twenty ninth. I believe. Um it's, they're going to have vendors, they're going to have, you know, projects and stuff to do, but you know, for kids, for adults. We, you know, whoever, but that's going to be at Wade Creek Park on July twenty ninth.
Sure.
Um, nothing really to add for me, but I just appreciate um everyone showing up tonight and um. Beverly, wow, what like amazing timing that you were in town and were able to speak. That's really cool. I love that, just how some, it just works out. So I appreciate you speaking and giving us a little background and staff is always appreciate you guys reaching out, Melanie. Friday conversations to go over everything and um, yeah, and thanks to all my fellow counselors and mayor.
Uh just echoing what other folks said as well too. Thanks for coming out. Thanks for the input. We needed uh some tough discussions or some tough topics here to go through tonight, at least for us. And uh really thanks for the staff for getting us prepared and Peter for coming out again too. And um great discussion tonight. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Um Joel?
I'm going to read this so I can get it right tonight. So. Uh if you haven't heard, uh already heard, I wish to confirm today that as, as of August fifth, twenty twenty-three, I'll be stepping down for my role on the Estacada City Council. This decision comes as my family is preparing for an impending relocation out of state. Our choice is a complicated one, deeply influenced by our emotions. For us, Estacada has been more than a home. It's a community we hold dear. Over the years, we forged friendships that have grown into something akin to family. We've dedicated a part of our hearts and lives to, and service to this community, standing together through various trials. Uh take, for instance, the wildfires of twenty twenty that once threatened our town. We weren't simply onlookers. We provided aid, kept vigil, uh vigil as the fires neared. And even established a relief center to assist those most impacted. This period highlighted our community's resilience and determination. Even when the threat of wildfires passed, our dedication did not wane. Through storms and heat waves, we remain committed. In fact, to offer relief for, from summer heat, we helped establish cooling centers. And most recently, we assisted in the installation of fourteen air conditioners in a three hundred main building. Our work didn't stop at emergencies. We also endeavored to create a sense of community, making sure everyone felt the festive spirit during Christmas and Thanksgiving. The joy and gratitude expressed by our neighbors has been some of our greatest rewarding experiences. Despite this deep bond and love for the people of Estacada, my wife and I have made the difficult decision to relocate. This decision largely influenced by our daughter's interest will take us to Arkansas. However, please rest assured that our hearts will always remain in Estacada. Remember, we are never more than a phone call away. Our decision was greatly influenced by our concerns about legislative measures like House Bill two thousand and two. This bill, which uh, which allows children to access gender altering drugs, surgery and abortions, all without parental consent. Is deeply troubling to us. As parents, the thought of facing legal consequences, including fines, imprisonment and even removal of our children by DHS. For intervening, intervening in these life-altering decisions is unfathomable. I'd like to express my deep gratitude for the privilege to serve this city and its incredible people. Working alongside all of you has been an honor. And I am confident in your continued efforts to secure the best for Estacada. I urge you to prioritize the welfare of our people, to listen to their voices, uphold the values that make our city and state a place we've been proud to call home. Thank you.
We will miss you, Joel. You uh, for all your, your uh loud obstructive. Outbursts and uncontrollable urges, uh you are still a good man. And behind that good man is conscience. And that I can appreciate as a mayor. Every one of you have it. And every one of you use it on occasion. So I really am uh sad to see you go. So I think you were good. You were a good man. So we appreciate you and um. That said, I'm not going to get into a big, long conversation to close tonight, so we will just adjourn this meeting.